Yeah, yeah, Molly Common! Stay Molly Common! Stay Sankie Molly!
Evening colleagues, can I welcome everyone to this executive board meeting? You're all welcome as well, thanks in the audience. Can I just remind colleagues and members that it has actually been filmed, this one, so best stand on the camera and get your lippy on. Also, if you could, when you want to speak, could you please introduce yourselves? Because there's an audience in the number one collision that's obviously is listening in but they did not get the possible view of who's speaking. So if you introduce yourselves when you ask the question how you speak, then please do. I've just got through the agenda. Call for declarations of interest. Pretty straightforward, if you have anything to declare, if you have any interests, please indicate and Matthew from the back will actually give you the appropriate advice. Minutes of the meeting on the 9th of October. Is there any alterations or amendments please? Effective decisions for the plan, pretty straightforward. Is there anything to add? I think the item 4 is the 12 miles from Western Link, second high level crossing of the Manchester Shippin' Out, councillor Monday please.
I'm just conscious councillor Barra sat on the floor.
I'm entirely comfortable, thank you.
There is a chair here.
Sit down, I'm happy. I'm in my place.
How busy is that?
Okay, can I ask councillor Monday what he wants to do this time please?
Thank you, miss. Right, so I think the first question we need to say is why have we actually been looking at a new link road through Warrington? I think the high demand from the public to say that they need to do something about our infrastructure has been long overdue and we've been developing roads as a town where our infrastructure has been growing with us. I think one of the reasons we've got there is to relieve congestion and improve air quality in Warrington Town Centre. I think, to improve the local infrastructure which is essential to towns to continue to grow and prosper. If there's one thing that lets us down is our highways and with bocal met and traffic jams causes not only destruction but pollution. I think to improve the connectivity between the north and south of Warrington, to unlock development and land and support the growth of the town, support the continued growth of Warrington economy with the northern powerhouse and to make Warrington a more attractive place to live. Those are the reasons why the council decided to take this scheme on. What we did, we asked our officers to look at the best possible route to achieve this and to achieve these aims, bearing in mind that you're right from the very start, there's no magical route across to the way, it wasn't going to be causing some disruption, some problem. So we asked our officers to actually find the best possible route to cross there and with the least possible disruption. I'll take any questions.
Why is it not going over the RPL landfill?
I know, taking questions from members of the executive board. Not really shouting that, but please don't shout out. Are there any comments, questions colleagues? Councillor Duffield?
Can I just ask councillor Audrey? In terms of the impact of HGVs, concerns have been expressed in terms of hazardous HGVs about going off the Western Link.
Yes, I have asked this question, which I've actually got some information on. If we're not expecting any extra HGVs coming through Warrington, this would hardly be coming through anyway on less suitable roads, so I think there's likely to be a safer way of doing things and having roads and having these wagons going through Warrington a lot quicker, a lot simpler, straightforward and not coming through the town centre where they don't need to be.
Councillor Carter?
Thank you Chair, councillor Jean Carter. I'd just like to say that I was pleased to see that residents' views were taken on board in the first consultation and that the red route, which is the preferred option, was revised, taking those comments and considerations of residents. So I am pleased about that. And I would like to ask Hans around, there are problems with Hood Lane and the Saxon Park exit entrance, if you could just answer that for me please.
I think we are not up to that consultation standard, we've got the route going across. I think with Hood Lane, Saxon Park, I suspect there's some anomalies that need to be looked at and some local issues that need to be looked at there as well to find whether we actually open up the Hood Lane, Saxon Park to a new route or we don't open it up. I think that's going to be a matter for more local consultation on getting the determination issues on board than the second, then they will pass the consultation place there particularly for people living in that area.
Councillor Duffield?
Yes, thank you Chair, I've got a question regarding item 8 which is to do with blight and compensation. I'd like councillor Monday to explain a little bit more about the arrangements for consultation and especially having been the councillor for the area of Warrington, I know that area very well and I know that the proposed link is going to go very close to those houses.
Yes, I think with the blight situation, I think there's four properties which are on the direct route, which I think after doing a job to make sure there's the least possible houses we've done on the route as possible, so there's four on the route itself which will be blighted and then we're going to be looking at other issues on a case by case basis. So I think it starts from tomorrow, I think they're going to be forming on our website tomorrow, because people are actually saying they think they're going to be blinded by this route and then the forms will be able to be available from tomorrow, I'm getting them up there on our system there. So people are actually saying we think they're going to be blinded and we'd like if we can take into consideration, I think the council will then take it and point us on a case by case basis.
Councillor Patel?
Thank you Chair. Some observations about the report, I do, as the local councillor for the great Sankie South where the road is affecting as well as the other, in the south of Warrington, I do really feel stuck between a rock and a hard place for the blight in this report. When I stood for election, I was quite clear with the electorate, in our manifesto, the electorate were saying, you know, we need more houses for our people to move in and we need to do something about the traffic congestion and the amount of talent it takes to get from one end of the town to the other end of the town. And when we consulted with our residents at the local level, we are getting very mixed messages. The people in Sankie Bridges are very, very, very articulate and very clear about the negative impact this development is going to have on their lives. Yet the rest of my ward are actually saying to me, they can see some positives. I've had some really constructive conversations with two local residents who I'd like to name, Cindy Maguire and Nancy Towers, who I think have really represented local people in a very, very, not just constructive way, but they've come and met me at my services, talked me through some of the issues about how it affects them. And I'm, you know, I do feel genuinely stuck, as it were, about supporting or not supporting this route, because half my ward wants it, half doesn't. I am pleased that less houses are being compulsory purchased. I am concerned about other aspects in terms of the loss of land, especially Sankie Valley Park. It was my understanding that when you lose parkland in development, it should be instated in some part of the ward as well, but I couldn't see that explicitly mentioned in the report. I just wondered if councillor would just clarify from my understanding of the planning board, it's right on that, because that was one of the things that residents were saying is that, you know, Sankie Bridge is already isn't very concrete, it's not like other parts of town where you might have trees on the streets and things like that. And Sankie Valley Park is, you know, the one local amenity which is very widely used, so to lose chunks of it, not only is that there are losses in terms of local amenity, but there's also a loss in terms of, you know, impact in terms of pollution by getting trees and things like that. So just like some of the assurance of that is going to be reinstated somewhere in the local vicinity and not somewhere further afield.
Yes, sure, I think councillor Patel's quite correct, the planning says that we do need to replace any green space that will be taken away, any play areas, and that's what the officer will be doing, do as close as possible to the site as he can, it will be a part of the more detailed, the more detailed, whether we're working the plan up or not, that will be put into that detail there. And I think Molly Common will be the similar thing there. We do know that new play equipment's on Molly Common and I think we knew right from the very start, let me ask the questions about play equipment going on Molly Common, is that the fact that you do know it may only be there a short period of time and the construction of the play equipment was made in such a way that it can be picked up and moved somewhere else? And I think we asked our question there and I think we've got to talk about that, we still want the play equipment there even though we know it may only be for a short period of time, so that that will happen in Molly Common as well, so that we can be best assured that that will be done to the best abilities of the team and it'll be quite like, sort of square meters or something like that, so it should be there and that's how it stays, that's the planning and that's what the council are trying to get at us. I think with, sort of, the points are going to point on this is that the actual cost of the scheme has actually gone up. I think that's, as officers find out more detail and more information came to light, some things have cost more than what it's expected to cost and also they've added in new information from the consultation and that process has actually changed the way officers are going to do things or tweak things and to make things a bit more easier, the cost of the scheme has gone up to £112 million pounds now.
This report of the council completed until they made the decision. Once you make the decision of where the route probably going, then that's where they'll have to replace the green infrastructure that goes through Sankie Valley Park etcetera, etcetera. But until they make that decision, the officers can't actually implement that strategy. Any other comments or questions, anyone please? Councillor Patel?
Just want to be clear, because there's still some potentially more rounds of consultation. You know, councillor Carter, as we talked about, Hood Lane and Saxon Park and I've got a very strong view about Hood Lane. It's not designed to be, I just don't think it's designed to be a suitable entry active point into this type of vote. I've laid my cards on the table on that one. But in terms of the public, you know, as a local councillor, we want to bring our residents along with us with developments like this and I think there's been a lot of media coverage about politicians in recent weeks, months, which have really damaged the electorate's faith in elected members when they are in these local councils. And genuinely, I honestly believe that the council of Warrington is trying to do the best, all my colleagues are trying to do the best for the town, but we can't ignore that, the public have a mistrust in elected members. Obviously, we are making the decision here today. I think I'm going to be supporting this just so that it gets to the next stage where it can be looked at by the planning committee independently of us and the collective in more detail. And it's all linked with the local plan and things like that, because I don't think anything I say will reassure those parts of my residents who want us to go ahead or the council will reassure those of our residents who don't want it to go ahead. And, you know, so I think for me, this process has gone on for some time now, it has caused a degree of anxiety and worry for people who are worried about losing their homes and the sooner we can get it through to the next stage and the better. And ultimately, I know some of our residents who've got particular technicalities have been writing to the Department of Transport and things like that, so I guess if their money's not brought to common market, the scheme will be harder to deliver. But we do need, I personally think we do need to get it looked at independently and this is, I think bypassing today allows us to get that independence cruising that residents have in mind.
Okay, I don't think there's a question to councillor Monday.
Do you have any other questions? Do you have any questions out there if you like? Because I think councillor Patel's actually picked up a pretty good point is there, is that the scheme is going through the next process. I think the funding from government on this stage is one stage of government funding. There are other opportunities for council to bid, other funding opportunities as well. It doesn't fall on the government funding for this stage, I think that's important but there is it's an aspiration of the town to actually have better infrastructure and actually spread the traffic around the town rather than going through town centre. So if it was unsuccessful on the government bid this time, it wouldn't be the end of the scheme, it would be the end of the phase of the scheme and then we'd be in the opportunity to apply for other rounds of government grant funding.
Okay, thank you. Any comments or questions? Can I just say that although it has been a difficult process this, it really has, being a councillor for quite a long time, I can remember the new town and the new town, over 50 years old this year, the new town, and probably the new town, sometimes it was good for Warrington but they never completed the infrastructure. And now, because we've been growing, so our economy's been growing, the infrastructure has improved a bit, so we have to do something about the increase in air quality, increase in traffic and traffic jams etcetera, etcetera. And this specific project is to relieve the town centre, Bridgefoot, Chester Road, going down Wilson Park and Street, Parker Street, because the air quality in them areas because of the queuing traffic is horrendous and we really do need to make sure that we've got something in place to provide an alternative route for that traffic if we can, because we won't stop growing, our economy is very vibrant and growing and we need to make sure we've got proper infrastructure placed to accommodate for that bus. And if we don't, then we don't want to be here in 10 years' time saying, I wish we'd have done this, I wish we'd have done that, but we've really got to make sure that we make the right decisions. And it's not been easy this, I'd like to congratulate the flood and the transport team because I think they've done an excellent job with this. The design of the route, it's the red route and it's been an amended red route, like someone says, that actually takes out less houses, but there will still be impact on other areas of the route, so that's what we need to make sure. And I've just got one last question for councillor Monday, it's to do with where it comes over the canal and it goes down through Lower Walton, near Eastwood Road etcetera. That, if we don't do anything to mitigate that, then you just have a concrete block, a concrete road, a concrete hideout looking at these houses. And what we need to do is try to make sure that we put proper mitigation measures in place that are agreed with it or planters on it or something to make sure that we're doing our best, not only to mitigate the structure but to actually mitigate the noise as well if we can.
Yeah, I think I can take a point there, sorry mate. Look at the plan there, I think that's going to be on the down slope of actually the, of the, it'll be on the lower part, it'll be the full height at that point, the east of those side of things, look at the map there, that's what I believe it's going to be. I think the detail of what we're going to put in there, we wouldn't leave a concrete wall to look at, we'll be looking at some softening infrastructure there and obviously to deal with some of the pollution and noise that is there, so we will be looking at some softening of that, so rather looking at a concrete or a brick wall, we will be looking, asking the officer to actually put something in there that's going to deal with some actual shrubberies and things, I think that's it, I can take as much as possible. I think people for reasons of role will be, I do know that they'll be concerned about that, but the people further afield, I mean, as concerned as they are, it's a genuine concern that they have and I think we do our best to address their issues.
The problem with where it comes over the canal is there's a fixed route that's got to drop down and go through under the railway bridge.
Under the railway bridge, yes.
So therefore, it's actually fixed that, so, you know, we can't ruin that anyway. As long as we take that into consideration and show the local councillors for that area and the residents will be relatively happy. I didn't mean to make a joke.
All things a joke.
Will you actually take a question from the floor before you vote?
No.
Well, thank you very much because democracy clearly is dead here.
What's the use of a meeting then? You asked us. What's the use of a meeting then?
The meeting is here for the executive board to make the decision.
You asked us.
No, we don't matter!
You asked us, you asked us to consult.
We've got an under page report.
It should be discussed in the council.
You consulted us on six routes, the route you gave us was £142 million, this is now £255, take it away mate, you've got it completely wrong, you're going to vote on something which is not true.
We've got a very detailed report.
On something which cost £142 million, this is now £255 and rising.
I'm going to bankrupt the town, pardon me.
It's not being valid!
It's a loser's report.
It would be disgusting for yourselves, don't you sleep at night. Resign! Resign! It should be disgusting for yourselves.
Has anyone seconded the recommendation please? It's been read by.
I hope you sleep well tonight.
Do you second it councillor Monday?
I mean, where's the person from Peel Bottomness through, where are they?
I'll go in favour of the show.
Disgraceful, disgraceful, hands, you're a joke.
It's disgusting! You're not from Warrington at all, you're not from Warrington, you're disgusting! And you, resign!
As councillor Patel has said, this moves it up to the next stage. Thank you.
£212 million now, when it's £250 million, then three quarters of a million pound and the council has gone skates and the residents are paying for it, you should all be ashamed of yourselves.
Thank you.
Good night.
We've got Times Square development, commercial letting, in this part one report, there's a part two report as well. The part two report goes into what is deemed to be a significant bank of tenants as well as a cinema. In this part one report, it didn't give any detail, but I think it's suffice to say that Times Square has delivered what this scheme was supposed to do, it's really been a major highlight for our town centre and if anyone has any doubts about that, the bus, the drive, what's going on in our town centre is quite significant and there's more and more residential properties being converted, there's more and more car parks being built, there's more and more, well, when we moved the market into the temporary building, that was a significant move there and all the traders are made up with that specific move and when they move market to the completed boot building and move into permanent market, that will be another significant move. But I think this Times Square development has succeeded in what we wanted it to do, it's really put a buzz into the town centre and it's made people think about making sure that we've got a vibrant and diverse and well-run town centre. Any comments or questions colleagues? Councillor Price?
Thank you Chair, I echo all the comments that you've just made, but also I think it's quite personal this and what we're doing in the town centre, because we've seen a very vocal campaign about building on Greenbelt over the past few weeks and months and in that local plan, we do talk about the need for homes in the town centre and I think it's very easy to just say we need to build on Brownfield, it's a really easy thing to say, but sometimes you're not addressing why people don't want to live there. I think it's fair to say that our town centre a number of years ago isn't a place and even now isn't a place where people are necessarily queuing to live, however, we're turning a corner, you know, Times Square is fundamental to that step change, the renewed emphasis that we're having in cultural services is also key to it and we're seeing examples like the housing project near the station of 300 plus apartments, you know, that just seems a few years ago, it was just never going to happen, but you know, this administration have faith in delivering on its pledges. It's so really, my statement is that for those who are knocking some of the things that we're doing in the town centre, who are being down on it, we're seeing the benefits of that already and this is another one of those key pledges and if we do want to build less homes on places like Greenbelt, we have to be supportive of initiatives that help repopulate the town centre. Thank you.
Councillor Duffield please?
Yeah, I guess, thank you Chair, I guess it fits, we've both come at this really. We're still, you know, two plus years away from seeing the completion of Times Square and yet we've got very strong interest in all the letting opportunities around Times Square in terms of the leisure and restaurant outlets for example and now obviously about other uses here which add to landmark tenants. I think the fact that there are so many organisations willing to come forward at this early stage demonstrates exactly what you said, Harry, around the commercial strength of the offer. And I think councillor Price is absolutely right as well in terms of it's really, you know, pinning or underpinning the regeneration, if you like, revitalisation of the town centre as a place to live and to obviously enjoy leisure time, so I'd quite happily second you, thank you Chair.
Thank you. Just a last comment, it is very good and I personally don't think you can have a thriving town without a thriving town centre. A thriving town centre is critical to what we're trying to deliver in this town and we need to, this town has grown to 1,800,000 population and lots of those on the periphery don't come into Warrington, we need to get them into Warrington and we need an attractive offer and we need a town centre that's busy between midday we need to, this town has grown to 2,800 population, and a lot of those on the periphery don't come into Warrington, we need to get them into Warrington, and we need an attractive offer, and we need a town centre that's busy between midday and midnight. Forget this version of it, forget what happened going on at the moment, we need to change the ethos of the town centre so that we've got a family orientated offer, that people want to live in the town, not only want to live in the town, want to work in the town, and want to be in the town, and that's what we need to do. So the move is seconded, that we have set this before?
Okay.
I agree. Any seconding? Did you?
I did.
Thank you. I was in favour of the show.